Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chamber, and it's nice to see people physically present in the council chamber. If you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically participating and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person is allowed three minutes speaking. City clerk will make a Zoom broadcasting announcement for those who are participating via Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, 2020, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of April 27th is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 876-2310-9951, and enter password number 846296. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the city council and city council as successor agency for the City of Grand Terrace for April 27th, 2021. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Councilmember Doug Wilson and Councilmember Allen. Will you give us the flag salute?
Yes.
All right. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good God, the eternal Father, we're thankful, Father, that we can gather together a group of thy servants, thy children, and conduct this meeting. We ask a small measure of thy intelligence and thy wisdom. We might keep our wits about us, that as we review the business of the city, that we might rightfully represent our constituents. And, Father, we ask a small measure of thy honesty to be blessed upon us, that we will do what we do in accordance with thy will. May I ask a blessing upon all those who are first responders, that they might be preserved, that they might feel thy love for them. And, Father, we also ask that all those who are ill or battling this pandemic might be comforted and that they might be healed according to thy will. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilman and Board Member Allen?
Here.
Councilman and Board Member Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilman and Board Member Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Hussey?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda at this time?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We do not have any special presentations, however, in the chamber, we have gifts from our Girl Scout Troop 76, some nice cookies and water bottles. So, thank you so much to them. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and noncontroversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to move consent calendar items at this time? All right, seeing no requests, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So, public comment at this time? Do we have requests to speak during public comment? All right. This is a time for, an opportunity for members to speak to items not on the agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda. They may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. I also may request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, and depending, an item may be requested to come back on a future agenda. Thank you. So, Valerie Holmes from the Veterans' Wall of Freedom.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak.
Oh, that would be good.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak. On behalf of the Foundation of Grand Terrace and the Veterans' Wall of Freedom, I would like to invite you to the Memorial Day, and it's actually on Memorial Day, May 31st, at the Veterans' Wall Park. We will be having speakers and a small socially-distanced event that day. Madam Mayor, I would like to invite you to speak that day, if you would. It's been quite a while. Last Memorial Day, we missed. Veterans' Day, we missed, and I'm very happy that we get to honor our fallen soldiers and our veterans. This Memorial Day is very bittersweet to me because I'm leaving, moving to, actually, probably the next day, moving to Florida to be with my grandchildren. And so, I'm glad we get to have this last event, and it should be good. We have a great speaker. We have a wonderful singer who's going to be there, and I hope that all of you can join us that day. There are invitations given to the city clerk for all of you, so I hope you can join us.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. And it's very, very heartwarming to know that we will be back in the park honoring our fallen veterans. Thank you so much for the invitation. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. So, we will move to new business. Our first item is an ordinance and resolution authorizing the electronic or paper filing of campaign statements and statements of economic interest, also known as the Form 700. Our presenter is Debra Thomas, City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of the Council, Debra Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is an ordinance and resolution authorizing the electronic or paper filing of campaign statements and statements of economic interests, which are your Form This item supports the 2030 Vision Statement, which supports our core values of open and inclusive government, and Goal Number 5, engaging in proactive communication by developing and implementing a cost-effective proactive communication program. Recent legis, excuse me, recent legislation went into effect adding Government Code Section 8461-5, allowing a local government agency to require by ordinance an elected officer, candidate, committee, or other person who is required to file statements, reports, or other documents under the Political Reform Act to electronically file or file online such documents. The system must be available free of charge to filers and the public for viewing files and must include a procedure for filers to comply with the requirement that they sign statements and reports under penalty of perjury. Additionally, FPPC supports and encourages efforts to move from a paper-based reporting system to a more transparent electronic system. Electronic filing makes it easier for officials to comply with reporting obligations and provides the public with information in a more accessible and consistent format. As of January 1st, 2021, legislation requires local government agencies to post campaign statements and reports on their agency's website within 72 hours of each applicable filing deadline, if they are filed, excuse me, if they are filed in paper format. Before posting, the local filing officer shall redact the street name and building number of the persons or entity representatives listed on any statement, report, or document, or any bank account number required to be disclosed by the filer. The reports and statements must remain on the agency's website for at least four years. The city clerk's office is the filing officer for statement of economic interest in campaign finance disclosure forms. Posting these documents to the city's website requires staff to manually redact forms prior to posting. The advantages to requiring electronic filing of disclosure documents allows, gives the public access to campaign statements on the city's website directly. Multiple prompts through the vendor that we would use can be put into place to ensure timely filing, providing multiple notifications. Storing previous statements for users is be able to refer back to your former statements from the year before. Permitting single filing for multiple offices, when you have multiple jurisdictions, this system will file on behalf of all of those agencies. In order to utilize an electronic filing system for Forms 460s and 700s, the city council must adopt an ordinance. Staff contacted NetFile and Granicus to determine which vendor would work best for the city. Both systems are approved by the Secretary of State for the filing of campaign disclosure statements pursuant to state law requirements, which include the system must ensure the integrity of the data and includes safeguards against efforts to tamper with, manipulate, alter, or subvert the data. The system must only accept a filing in the standardized record format developed by the Secretary of State and compatible with the Secretary of State's system for reviewing an online or electronic filing. The system must be available free of charge to filers and to the public for viewing. Benefits for the public council and commission include timely access to campaign financial data, increased transparency through searchable database, and use of open data source for higher-level analytics. Candidate and treasurer benefits, this gives them free campaign finance systems to assist the first-time treasurers, especially in candidates. System design ensures that all required data is complete, reducing the need of amendments due to errors. Data entry may take place periodically or all at once with information saved for future filings. Electronic delivery provides fast and convenient filing methods. Benefits for the city is it generates correspondence for notifying filers of filing deadlines and missing statements, automates the process for posting redacted statements online for public viewing, and provides a public portal for viewing statements and reduces the number of requests for information. As of April 27th, 2021, FPPC has approved electronic filing systems for 54 state agencies, 46 county agencies, 185 city agencies, 64 special district agencies, and recently two courts. To facilitate the full transaction to electronic filing, staff will provide detailed instruction and one-on-one training. Staff did receive two proposals for an electronic filing system. NetFile's cost is $32,000 a year, which is an ongoing cost annually. Granicus is $1,800 for the first year, but has yearly increases thereafter. When the proposals were requested, we asked for quite a few different types of items that were included, where NetFile actually hosts this on their platform and not on the city's server. Granicus, their platform is placed on our server, and the staff is required to perform all the tasks where NetFile actually hosts and performs the tasks on our behalf. So, after reviewing both of the proposals, staff determined that NetFile would provide the best economic terms and user functionality. Additionally, NetFile accounts for well over half of the electronic disclosure document filings in the state of California. Based upon the foregoing, the proposed ordinance and resolution permits but does not require campaign statements be filed electronically. Anyone who wishes to paper file may continue to do so. It is therefore recommended that the city council conduct first reading of the attached ordinance and adopt the attached resolution. That's the end of my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I also have Tom DeBert, the Vice Chair for NetFile here, to answer any questions you may have of the vendor.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Other questions of staff at this time? When you were reviewing the cost of each of the systems, you mentioned that Granicus increases every year. Does that mean that NetFile does not increase ever?
Currently, it is just an ongoing rate. We have, I actually have Tom on the line. On the contract, it's actually just a proposal that we've given, and it just said $3,200 a year, ongoing. Mr. DeBert, if you'd be happy to answer that question? Could you unmute?
Still can't hear him. Nope. No, there's something going on with your audio. I'll go to another question. Perhaps the city clerk has the answer while you work on your, on your audio. Do you know that if there is paper filing done, is then that uploaded by the city clerk's office?
I would work with NetFile and provide that information to them, and they will actually load it for me.
Okay. So, if somebody is continuing to paper file, that doesn't mean that they won't be part of this system?
That is correct.
Okay. Nope. Still nothing. Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
I didn't notice. Is this a, is this an evergreen agreement that we're signing?
I don't believe it'll be an evergreen, but at this, based on the size of our city, the $3,200 is, my conversations with Mr. DeBert were that it was just ongoing. We have not come up with a contract that it would increase, but it will not increase for at least the first several years.
Have you had an opportunity to view online the way that the filing looks for other cities?
Yes. The City of Temecula actually has theirs where they're linked, and it is placed on the city clerk's portion of the website. All of the form, all of the candidate names, the elected official names are there, and you will click on that person's name, and it takes you to all of their various filings in one location.
Okay. So, it's not like you have to wade through a whole lot of elected officials. We're not combined up with a whole lot of other cities and counties and state officials. It is all specific to our city?
Yes. It's linked directly to the City of Grand Terrace's website.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, City Clerk, for that report. I just want to ask you, will previous forms filed from previous elections be retroactively put onto the website or however it's going to be posted, like from, you know, two years ago and four years ago and so forth and so on?
I can't answer that with 100% certainty, but based on the information that I've been provided, I don't see why we can't coordinate that with them to retro that back, and we could work on getting that online. Whether it's through them or I do it myself and link it, we'll get that up there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Nope. Okay.
And I apologize. I said, I think I said $32,000. It was $3,200.
That's a little bit easier to handle.
Okay.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks. One more. In the, in our staff report, Form 700 and Form 460 are mentioned, but there are some other forms that are sometimes used by candidates based, you know, during the campaign. Will those also be like 410 or, you know, committee forms and things?
A majority of the FPPC forms that we use will be able to be included in that, along with ethics training and the harassment prevention training. Tracking will be able, that is also included in this program. Again, the cross-jurisdictional electronic filings. And there's also app-based, you can download an app to your phone to also assist you as well, to retrieve information on your phone or your laptop from wherever you are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And your staff report does say $3,200. So, that was just, that was just a way that you, you stated it tonight during your report, but it does say $3,200. All right. Are there, I'll open public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
You know, I'll make that motion, but I'm curious if the gentleman that was up there, if he ever got his audio, because that question that was asked about the ongoing, that's one that I wanted answered.
He's gone.
Is he? Okay. Well, I'll make that motion.
He's actually back.
Now, I see him back. All right. Let's see if we can ask, get him to answer that. He's connecting to audio right now.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. Sorry about that. Okay. To answer your question, as far as pricing goes, you will be our 11th city in San Bernardino County, including the county itself. The county started out as our client back in 2007. We've never had a price increase, nor have we ever had a price increase for any of the cities in the county. The reason being is we've brought on quite a bit of new business over the years. We have almost 150 cities now in California using our systems, and we've been able to maintain our cost structure where we haven't had to take any price increases. And if I have it my way, we will have to. The only thing I could see on the horizon that might impact our costs would be overall inflation. If we went through double-digit inflation, perhaps it would cause a problem for not only us, but everybody, and we may have to take a price increase at that point. But other than that, I don't see anything on the horizon that would impact our costs, do you?
All right. Thank you for that answer. Any further questions for NetFile while we have them on? Okay. So, you are making a motion, Councilmember Allen?
That's correct. I'm gonna, I'll make, move the recommendations to introduce the title only, Recommendation 1 and Recommendation 2, approve of the resolution.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Is there further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. City Attorney, will you read the title of the ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adding Chapter 2.06 to Title II: Administration and Personnel of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Authorizing Electronic and Paper Methods of Filing Campaign Financial Disclosure Statements." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. May we have the vote call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 7, which is a status update on priority capital improvement program projects. Our presenter is Robert Eisenbys, Interim Public Works Director.
Good evening. You got the name.
Good evening.
Did well with the name.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here tonight, and I'm looking forward to hearing your update.
Okay. Well, we'll just get right into it. These are some of the priority projects that were identified previously by the council. Their fitness park shade structure, wireless internet at Pico Park and Rollins Park, the wheelchair swing at Richard Rollins Community Park, the road repair and rehabilitation that's just starting, West Barton Bridge replacement in the city, in a joint project with the City of Colton, where they're the lead, and the highway safety improvement program, Cycle 9 guardrail improvements, and then the Mount Vernon slope stabilization project. So, the fitness park shade structure, we are just waiting right now for delivery of the poles. They should be here on May 5th, and then we have a contractor that's already been awarded the contract by council on February 23rd, I believe, to Jonescape, and they will install the poles with the foundations. And then, once the poles have been installed, they will take aerial measurements for the dimensions of the shade sail and the cabling that supports the sail. And then, they will supply that, those dimensions to the manufacturer, and then the sail will be fabricated and then shipped to the city, and then Jonescape will install the sails. One of the things that takes some time on that is the lead time for the manufacturer of both the poles and the sail. The poles, as I said, will be here on May 5th. That process started, but they won't start the fabrication of the sails until they have the exact dimensions. So, that's, that's the timeline on that. So, that, that'll be, expected completion would be July 15th, based on all the lead times. And we're thinking we might be able to get the shade sail a little bit sooner, and if we do, it'll go in, it'll go in sooner. And this is just some details that show, sort of the structural details of how this shade sail is laid out. I think you've seen these maybe before when you awarded the contract, and then these are the shape of the sails. Doesn't really show the rest of the park, but it, it's situated over the play area.
Do we have something wrapped around the poles in case somebody walks into one inadvertently?
I don't think at this point there is, but that could be, something that could be added that wouldn't, you mean like some padding or something like that, or?
Yeah.
I know that the colors were selected previously by the Parks Committee, but if, if there was a need for something, you know, so that some, if there was a safety need, then I think there could be padding added to the poles if that was deemed necessary. I think they're gonna be separated outside of the play area, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought they were right up close to the playground.
Once we see where they're actually located, then we can see if more is needed for that. I don't think it will be.
That makes sense. Thank you.
The wheelchair swing is an interesting type of swing. It allows for someone that's in a wheelchair to be able to enjoy a swing. So, if a child were confined to a wheelchair, they would be able to do that. That wing is, we're waiting on delivery of that swing. That'll go about the same time because it's the same contractor. So, I think the contractor's gonna want to combine that work, but that'll also be an installation in-ground with footings. So, they, I think I have a picture here that shows it, those would actually be installed into the, into footings in the ground. They have another one that's like a portable one that you can move around, but we, the one that was selected was the permanent. And that's another picture that shows what it looks like. So, the wireless internet at Pico Park and Rollins Park. The cable company is still working on the installation at both parks. They seem like they're a little bit ahead of the schedule, so that's good. We might be actually be able to beat the date that we have here if they're able to pull that off. I'm gonna be meeting with them later this week to take a walk over at the Rollins Park to see if, if the location is gonna meet our needs in the building where they're planning to route the cable. And then, once the cable company has the cable selected, then onsite computing will come out and put in the equipment we need for the, you know, wireless router and to make wireless available. And then, of course, the city will have to discuss how you want to control that, and that'll be part of the discussion we have with onsite in terms of security. And, you know, there's usually a, everybody has to do it. You have to approve, agree to the terms and conditions in order to use it and those kind of things. So, that'll be part of what onsite does, is setting up that process for people to use it.
Is there a reason we've gone back to referring to the park as Pico Park even though the council voted to rename it Veterans Freedom Park?
I apologize for that. I'm pulling information from a lot of sources, so I'll make sure that I call that Veterans Freedom Park from here on out.
That's okay. That was really directed at the city manager.
I'm sorry. I didn't see that there.
I pulled a lot of information together, and it, some of the information I found was very valuable, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, I just relied on what I could find.
So, that'll be updated then when you apply for certain funding for it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, the 2020, 2021 road rehabilitation, you awarded a contract on X paving. So, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one road rehabilitation. You awarded a contract to Onyx Paving, I think that was on February twenty-third. They actually started work last week at the intersection of Canal and Mount Vernon, replaced the curb ramps, so those have been poured and they're in now, and they're curing. They will be returning to do paving in that intersection, that was pulled out of another contract. And then, they're also scheduling the chip seal, the treatment that is on most of these streets is a Cape Seal, which is a chip seal rubberized, and then on top of that is a Type Two Slurry. I don't want to get too technical, but it's a two-step process. It'll, a lot of cities have started using it because of the cost-effectiveness and the life you get out of it. Some of the streets will, will hold up pretty well with that. Especially streets that, you know, before this, this new method came along, we had been accustomed to grinding down those streets and resurfacing, which is very expensive, and it also generates a lot of material that sometimes gets recycled, but we don't get the benefit of that. So, the good thing about this product is it goes down a lot less cost, and it gives you about the same life as a Millen overlay. So, you know, and I think there's been some experience with this in some of the other agencies, where they've actually had pretty good results out of it. It does get a little messy, so one of the things we're gonna do is really just keep, keep an eye on the contractor and make sure he keeps everything cleaned up, because it does generate a lot of rock material when they put that down. But that is, there's ten streets, there's actually eleven. There's another street that's actually a street that half-owned by the City of Riverside Utilities, Renee Lane, it's not on the list here. But I'm negotiating with them to get them to pick up half the cost for their half. Wouldn't make sense to only pave half the road, so I think they're, they haven't said no, and I'm following up with them. So, and then I think the other half of it is actually a sewer easement for the city, and the pavement actually protects the sewer line. So, it's not necessarily a street per se, but it is access for both agencies, so it's valuable for us to do. There's a map that shows where they are. And again, Renee Lane isn't shown there, but it is included in the contract. I will just say that Barton, east of Honey Hill, that is not Cape Seal. That's gonna be a full two-inch Millen overlay with two inches of rubberized asphalt. So, that's gonna be a much more extensive repair or rehabilitation. And that one will have to have staging with the traffic, so we'll be working with the contractor on how they do that. But that's gonna probably be half and half. They'll move half the traffic over on half, and then they'll move the traffic on the other half. And there's, this work is still a few weeks out, because they're still lining up their subcontracts for, the timing and schedules of their subcontractors for the chip seals. So, I think it's about three weeks from now is when you're gonna see all this actually start. But they have to do a lot of preparation work, so you might see us still see some things. They have to go out and actually clean out the cracks, get the weeds out, fill the cracks or seal them. And that all has to happen prior to the chip and the slurry. So, so there will be some activities out there, even though it won't be paving.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, do we know what's underneath any of these roads? Because my guess is, they were put in at the time that the county did them.
It varies, it varies. I think we have some of those records, and I know in the pavement management system has some of that data, as far as some core samples that may have been taken. It really does vary, though, even on a single street, it can vary depending on when it was built and, you know, and the history of it, so.
I understand, I understand that rubber's quieter.
It is.
And I do know that it would have a tendency to bridge small cracks, but then, and I know it's been going on for now about fifteen years,
Yeah.
plus or minus, and there's, you know, allowances for it, but.
Yeah, the, the rubberized chip seal that we put in is kind of an interlayer. That actually does a really, pretty good job of what we call reflective cracking. So, what, what'll happen on just regular dense-grade asphalt that you put down, if you don't, if there's cracking below that, it won't be very long before those cracks reflect up into the surface. And what the experience has been with this rubberized is that it, it tends to resist that reflective cracking, and that's why it's so popular.
We used to call it telegraphing.
Okay.
So, okay, and then I guess my, my last question in relation to that is, when we get to this point, I know we've got a five-year plan. We're gonna be hitting Barton Road and Mount Vernon and some of the really tough roads. Because we don't know what's underneath these things, and because they get so much truck traffic, it would seem to me that it might be important for us to, to look at some kind of webbing that we can use, because I don't think rubberized is gonna do that. And they, by, by virtue of the traffic that they get, they should be close to a freeway, at least a highway, deal, which means we're talking a subbase of probably eight to ten inches and a compacted sub-subbase and all the rest of it. And I am sure that when they put that stuff in, it was dirt, and they crawled it a little bit and watered it down and put stuff on the dirt.
You're probably pretty accurate, I would imagine. It depends on the age of the road, and on a major arterial where we do expect trucks, I would say those, those would be candidates for doing some core sampling to get actually what, and then get some geotechnical recommendations on those. I'm familiar with the product you're talking about, there also is a, they used to call it Petromat, but it's a new type of Petromat called, it's a glass-type mat, and it actually holds up even better. And the good thing about that is, is that when you come back and grind, you can grind right through it. It doesn't end up chewing up and clogging up the grinder. So, there's, there's advancements been made in those products as well. But I would, I would definitely look at the underlying to make those decisions.
Because it's coming, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And this is just sort of a listing of those streets, this is right out of the pavement management system, so has the data on areas and so forth. It takes us to the West Barton Bridge Replacement, which is actually a removal, technically. And I've been, I went to the PD, the Project Development Team meeting, we did it virtually a week or two ago. And so, I'm pretty caught up on what's going on with that project. They're currently working on the environmental, they have it pretty much completed. The last thing they're working on is how they're gonna have a temporary detour, so they're still trying to solve that as part of the environmental, so that it doesn't create any issues later on in construction. So, that, that, they expect they'll have that done by July, and then have Caltrans do its review and hopefully certify the document. And then, they're looking at May twenty-twenty-two for final engineering to be completed. They will have a little overlap with the right-of-way, they can start some of that, but not, not until the environmental document is completed, and there's only so much they can do prior to having final engineering. But they will start it and overlap it. That they expect to have completed by the December twenty-twenty-two, and then start construction by March of twenty-twenty-three. That three-month period is the time it takes to get all the authorizations and everything from Caltrans, and, and to get their bids and all of the preparatory work that it takes to get to start construction. And then, they expect about a nine-month window of construction, now it could be sooner, it could be less than that, but that puts us at February of twenty-twenty-four.
Mayor.
Councilmember Allen.
Regarding that West Barton Bridge Replacement, when they build the, when they remove that and rebuild that, are they gonna provide? Well, let me back up a little bit. At one time, we were working on a project, or we wanted a project, where that old rail bed could be converted into a footpath, bicycle path down to the Santa Ana River Trail. So, would there be access from above to below when they build that new bridge? Can they, will there be, can they put like stairs or some way for people who are walking on Barton that they could walk down onto that footpath, or if they're coming up that footpath, they can come up onto Barton?
I didn't see that in any of the preliminary design that they have at the, to this point. So, I don't even think there is, it's actually gonna be solidly filled with, with bill material.
So, I, I thought at one time they were gonna leave it open underneath, put it at grade, but people would be able to have, it'd be like a tunnel underneath or something, I don't know, is that not the case?
I think that might be feasible, but I don't think that's, and I'll have to ask some questions about that, if that's been discussed prior, to find out what, what happened with that. I'm glad you mentioned it, though, so now that I can bring it up. I have seen situations where you can use a precast box, like that's used for drainage, box culvert, that can also serve as a tunnel. They use them on golf courses quite a bit for golf cart paths, things like that. So, it's not out of the question, it just probably comes down to a matter of cost. And that type of thing probably would be non-participating on the Fed side. They're, they wouldn't, they wouldn't participate in that cost, but that doesn't mean it's not possible, although that we, I think, unless Colton was willing to share that cost, it would probably all fall on Grand Terrace if we want to assist on that, so. But I will inquire, and I'll, I'll find out what, what the discussion was on that.
Thanks.
This is just to show, it's kind of hard to read this, but maybe you can see it better on your screens. This is sort of their initial, and this is based on preliminary engineering of what their project site will be. And you can see it's just gonna be two lanes, and then I think there is a shoulder and I believe a bike lane, so. And then, we have the HSIP Highway Safety Improvement Program, Cycle Nine, Guardrail Improvements Project. This one is in the stages of, I know that we have a consultant working on this, and they have had some, not, didn't get a response on the RFP initially for design. And it is a fairly simple design project, so it may not be very attractive to large design firms, but I think with some outreach, we'll probably be able to find at least a few firms that would be willing to propose on doing the design for this. In the meantime, we're working on getting the, the paperwork we need with Caltrans. One of the first things is the Preliminary Environmental Study Form, and it has a lot of other things that go along with it, some other, the bio, which is a simple bio for this type of project, doesn't have a lot of disturbance. And then, there's also a field review, some things like that with Caltrans. We're expecting this to be a categorical exemption, especially because it qualifies as a safety project for that. So, we don't think that's gonna be a long, drawn-out process for the environmental. And like what I show here is that it would be, have that completed by July, and then be able to actually award a contract for the engineering, for the design. We could, we could actually do that parallel with each other, we don't, one doesn't depend on the other. So, those will work concurrently. And then, we need to get the funding obligated by Caltrans and give us our authorization to go to construction. There's some paperwork involved with that. And then, we would go to construction, or advertise for bids in September, award the contract in November, and it's really not a long contract. You know, I'm kind of expecting it to be maybe a forty-five-day contract to put these guardrails in. So, that, that has us completed by January.
Councilmember Allen.
Where on Vista Grande will the guardrail go?
I have some exhibits here, let's see, this is Barton Road. It shows you where it would be, I know it's hard to see because it's kind of small, but hopefully you can see it better on your screen. Vista Grande, it's where the yellow is there.
So, there's a few locations.
Yeah, so you can see around the curve up on the west or east side there, and then.
There's a portion that's kind of.
There's a few places.
That has a mesh, mesh, orange mesh around it, is that going to be one of those locations?
I would have to go, I can't confirm that, because I haven't seen that, but I can go out and confirm that for you and get, and get you an answer.
It doesn't currently have a guardrail.
Okay, well, I, these, this shows where they will be, and I will go out to these locations, and if I see that, I will, I will make, make you aware of that.
Is this the church here?
Yes. Okay, so that's the area where the orange mesh is at this time.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wanting to confirm, thanks so much.
Yeah, and there's a few other locations further away from that, too. And then, this shows where the Mount Vernon, there's, there's, I don't see it here, but there's some, it's, oh, it's right there, a small little yellow line along the edge of Mount Vernon. That would be to protect for going over the downslope.
That's heading down the hill.
Yeah. And there's where, where it will be on Vivienda. And the Mount Vernon slope stabilization, which is pretty near that weather slide, we're just waiting for FEMA to notify on their results of the grants. And interestingly enough, their website says four to eighteen months, which is kind of a long window. But that's what they say, so I think that would be from March, so I have from July. We could get it notified, we could hear results as early as July, but it could be all the way to September of the following year, so. That's one of those, it just depends on the way they review the process of reviewing, and you gotta remember, they're looking at, this grant program is kind of a nationwide grant program, so it's, it's sort of competitive with virtually every other application in the entire nation. So, it, it takes them some time to go through those, but anyway, that's, not much we can do but wait till they, they announce. But there's a picture of where that is, and that's where the erosion is occurring on the slope. So, that would be what we would achieve to do, attempt to do here would be to mitigate that and avoid a major disaster by doing a little bit of, you know, using some of the mitigation funding ahead of that, which would be smart. And that's why the program exists, is for identifying threats and using some funding to, to prevent a bigger disaster. And that's all I had, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any further questions on any of the projects? All right, seeing none, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council, looking for a motion to receive and file the status update.
Make the motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen to receive and file, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Let's move on to item eight, and this is an item that will be looked at as the city council and the successor agency. It's a dissolution of successor agency and related actions required. Our presenter tonight is Terry Shea, Interim Finance Director.
Actually, Mayor, I will be, gee, here'll Duffy, City Manager, and Terry Shea will be, the Interim Finance Director will be assisting me in this presentation.
One of you, City Council, one of you, successor agency?
There we go. All right.
All right, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you. So, as the mayor has indicated, this report is for the dissolutionment of the successor agency, and we're gonna be asking for some actions for the council to take. So, tonight's presentation is about the dissolution of the successor agency. The staff report will cover the following, the Redevelopment Dissolution Act, ABX-126, required actions of ABX-126, successor agency progress on the dissolutionment based on AB-1, one, ABX-126, and then the next steps for the city council and the successor agency. So, ABX-126 requires redevelopment agencies to dissolve, and successor agencies were formed as a replacement. Successor agencies were charged with winding down the redevelopment agencies. There was a requirement for an audit to be conducted to determine agencies' liabilities and assets. There's also a requirement for development of a long-range property management plan to look at all of the property that the agency had. The cities, cities can also form a housing successor agency from the RDA by having the assets from the RDA transferred to a new housing successor agency. And then, there also was the Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule that basically looked at all of your liabilities and your assets, and it developed a, a schedule for all of your liabilities. So, let's start off with the successor agency progress on agency dissolution. The city did establish a long, some successor agency did have a long-range property management plan developed. plan developed. The city established a housing successor agency. And there was approved recognized obligation payment schedule that the city also did one amendment to. And then the city defeased over $17 million in bonds. So let's look at the disposal of successor agency property. So we have one property left on the long-range property management plan. That property is located, it's actually property number two on the long-range property management plan. It sits not too far from City Hall. It's .33 acres, and it's office commercial. So our goal would be for the successor, for the city to purchase that property from the successor agency for fair market value. The current, for market value that's listed in the long-range property management plan is $160,000. We're currently getting an appraisal for that, to update that value. The next step, the city needs to repay a loan of $885,797 to the successor agency. This is a balance of $885,797 in prior year loan advances made to the general fund from the redevelopment agency. So over the course of the agency's life, the general fund borrowed up to about $7 million and repaid the majority of that back, and now it's a balance of $885,797. The successor agency also owes $248,636 to the housing successor agency for, to the housing successor agency. And that's currently listed on the ROPS now at a payment plan of $50,000 per year. And so our goal would be for the successor agency to actually pay that back so we don't have to wait to close down the agency after this payment has been made, the final payment has been made over years of time. So the next steps in the summary. So we want to dispose of the successor agency property, that's $160,000. The city needs to repay the $885,000 of successor agency loan. The successor agency owes housing successor agency $248,000. Plus, the successor agency has $482,958 in bond proceeds. So when the city actually, I'm sorry, when the successor agency actually started to defease the bonds, we were given a certain point in time. And before we were able to defease the bonds, the interest on those bond proceeds accrued to $482,000. So we need to now transfer that money to the state as part of our dissolutionment process. And so I'm going to give you just a quick scenario here in terms of what we're trying to do. So we have the sale of the property, and that would be money from the City of Grand Terrace to the successor agency. And then we have the repayment of the city loan, that would be money from the City of Grand Terrace to the successor agency. And then we have this CRF repayment for the successor agency to pay the housing successor agency of $248,636. And so if you look at what happens here, this money, the first three items here, minus this amount here for the successor agency, will equal $1.2 million. And then that $1.2 million is distributed to all of the taxing entities. And I think you gave an example here. So here's an example of the property tax allocation breakdown. It's real difficult to read. Maybe an easier slide here, maybe here, it's easier to read. This is the same distribution method. So currently, Colton Joint Unified School District gets 26.5%. So think of this as the dollar, this is all broken down into $1. So 26.5 cents, Grand Terrace General Fund, 20%, 20 cents, Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, 19.3%, the County General Fund, 12.7%, the County Fire Protection District, 10.3%. San Bernardino Community College gets 4.5%, San Bernardino Valley College gets 2.3%, Flood Control Zone 2 gets 2.3%, County Free Libraries get 1.2%, Superintendent of Schools, 0.4%, and others with 0.5%. And so that's sort of the breakdown of what that looks like. And so why are we doing this? And so here's what happens is, the city's total, all the properties within the Grand Terrace boundaries has an assessed value of, based on this, is $1.1 billion. And so what happens is, that $1.1 billion is assessed the 1% property, 1% property tax. And that tax is distributed based on this percentage. So based upon the housing successor agency being, I'm sorry, the successor agency being eliminated, then we would fall back to all the property tax being distributed based on this particular percentage. So there would be no more successor agency, and we'd all fall back to this standard, normal distribution of the property tax. So this 1% property tax would be distributed in this manner, and the city would receive a percent, the 20% of that particular share. Also, just to kind of note a summary here of this other action was, this is the same information I showed you earlier about the sale of the property, the city loans being repaid, the bond payment proceeds, and the CRF payment. So of that, when that money is all distributed, the city will receive 20% share of that, and it would be $255,000. So once we end up paying this money, we would get 20% of this, and it would be $255,000. And so with that, there are a number of items that the staff has requesting. I think I've covered, I've covered item 1, 1A, B, C. And D would be to amend the successor agency last and final recognized obligation schedule in order to allow the revenue realized from the sale of the successor agency property to the city and repayment of the loan owed by the city to the successor agency to be used, and any other non-obligated funds held by the successor agency to repay the loan owed by the successor agency to the housing successor agency. Then E, would any other action that may be necessary to complete the dissolutionment of the successor agency? F, request dissolutionment of the successor agency contingent upon approval of the above mentioned actions by the countywide oversight board and the Department of Finance, and completion thereof, and request the final countywide oversight board resolution allowing the successor agency to dissolve contingent on the same. And then, so in doing so, we also authorize staff to submit a request for items before the San Bernardino Countywide Oversight Board regarding the above mentioned items as may be necessary, and to begin immediate working with countywide oversight board and county staff to achieve the dissolutionment of the successor agency. And there is a tight timeframe in us doing that. And so the overall goal here is to dissolve the agency to return back to our standard property tax distribution. With that, I'm available for any questions, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Robles.
First of all, can you make sure in the packet that these spreadsheets are right-side up? I had to take a photo, edit it, and make it so I could see it long. I have a problem here because we're getting a lot of different numbers. At one point, we had calculated be $500,000 increase to our revenue, and then there was a discussion that some of that money was going to go away. These numbers are a little bit different than what I'm accustomed to, and I was concerned about if these were not going to be rejected at some point, we're going to be in a pickle, but HDL has reviewed them, so.
Yes, Councilwoman Robles, HDL reviewed the numbers. We then also had Mr. Shea's firm review their work to determine that these were accurate numbers.
Because this is what I think would be helpful for me and for the council is, what is the base property tax? Because we're accustomed to seeing a number about five, six million, not 1 billion. So what's 20% of 1 billion?
So...
So what I'm trying to get at is, this is like a moving target, this property tax revenue. So what is the number before we dissolved the agency, and what's going to be the future base number moving forward?
Okay. So Terry, do you want to answer that question in terms of what the base number is right now? So in the packet, packet page 158, there is the, our estimate of what the 1% represents. And so it represents $12 million, $12 million. That's the 1% of the 1.2 billion assessed value.
Okay, let me get to that page.
And then our share is 20% of that?
Yes.
And so that doesn't have a, that doesn't have a column that represents that revenue number on your HDL sheet?
This is also from HDL, that sheet.
That's what I said, on the HDL sheet.
This is what they project if the agency goes away. It'd be 1 billion, 206 million, and our share would be 2,410,000. Right now, we get about $700,000 in the 1%.
Okay. All right, so you're on... On page 58, correct?
Page 58.
So you're saying the net agency, well, agency is different from city. So, but you're calling us an agency in this?
I think they mean city, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Could just be a typo.
Okay, so then, you're saying that roughly 20% is against a, what number?
It's the $2,410,000, 239 for the City of Grand Terrace.
Okay, so then for us, that means how much?
$2,410,000.
Okay, so I'm getting confused between, what's, no, my question is, what is our base property tax revenue?
Right now, we get about 700-some thousand in the 1%, and then we get the RPTTF, which went from, I think, $1,009,000 last year, and it's going to drop to how much?
1.4, 1.3?
1.3. It's going to drop below that. So we're going to get less money because of the change in the formula for distributing the RTPPF or whatever it's called.
Okay, well...
So there's no comparison slide that shows what we would get now if we stay as we are versus making all these changes?
I think on page 159...
The sideways one?
Yeah.
Okay, now I have to go to my photo of it.
Do you have that one that you can put up on the screen? Because in our packet, it is sideways.
No, sorry.
My, I couldn't get it to rotate. Yeah, you had to put it up. Yeah, now I'm wearing my contacts, so I can't see.
Yeah.
Well, rather than belabor it here, exactly, is, why don't, can you bring back to us, because we're going to be doing the budget deliberations?
Yes.
Could you bring back, or provide for information for us, prior to doing this, what was our base property tax, and what the change is going to be, and what you're plotting out for this next fiscal year?
Absolutely. We can show you what that looks like.
All right, thank you.
Further questions at this time? Councilmember Allen.
You had mentioned in your staff report, Mr. Duffy, that, are we on a short timeline with this?
We are on a short timeline, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yes, we are.
Can you detail that and tell me what the deadlines are and things like that?
Yeah, we have to request to the oversight board by the 29th of April, and then we have to have the information to them with the staff reports by May 7.
So do you have time to fulfill the request of Councilmember Robles, or before we, or are we going to be able to, you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, but her request was only to come back and clarify the differences when we do the budget process.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe it was to halt our current progress before that.
Okay, my other question is, the $800,000 repayment, or 880-something thousand repayment? Where's that money coming from?
That money would come from your fund balance, your rainy day fund.
Rainy day fund? And...
And do you have something to show us for what that would look like when we make that payment, and what we would have left?
I don't have that today. You have... The number we had was based on last year's audit, but then we have this year's revenues and expenses, so once we close, we'll have you a better number. But we had over that in last year's audit. We had over that amount, so.
So one of the, one of the things that I wanted to ask about was, because we had a meeting earlier, you know, about this, and I got to thinking about that afterwards. When we were, in that meeting, we, I had asked this about where does this money come from? And then we discussed, if we do or if we don't, what do we get? And I remember you had said, for the next five years, you'll get duh, duh, duh. But if you don't do this, you won't get that.
Well, so I guess we need to be clear on one thing is that, so the city has a debt to the successor agency of, that $885,000. When the city, when the city did its last and final ROPS, that $885,000 was not identified as, it was on our books, but was not identified in the last and final ROPS. We have to amend our last and final ROPS to include that payment. But that's a payment that the city owes. And so once we, we've now alerted the DOF of that, so we're going to need either pay a repayment schedule or pay that entire debt.
And...
And so once you, once you close down the agency, our estimate, and we'll come back with clarity on that, is anywhere from 800 to $1 million more in revenue. But if you don't shut down the agency, you're not going to be able to access that. You'll still remain on the value that we received this year in terms of, from the RPTTF.
Okay. And the last, either question or point I would want to make is, by moving the 880,000 out of the rainy day fund to cover this loan, and then I had asked earlier about, how quickly can we replace that into our rainy day fund? Because that is a concern of mine. And would, would it become a priority to replace that into our rainy day fund? That would be important.
That would be the council's prerogative in terms of the direction that we get. So when we look at the new budget for next year, we will, we will project the new revenue that's coming back. And so if the council wants to look at that total dollar amount and replenish the entire fund balance, or do we want to do operations and get back to normalcy? In addition to that, I must add, the council does have some assets which you're selling, which will be used, will replenish your fund balance.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, City Manager.
All right. I have a couple of questions, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Robles. On this property that we have under the successor agency, in the staff report, you suggested that the use would be for a library expansion or a community center. If you are having that, I imagine you have to give a reason why we would purchase it. And those are very good reasons, although we haven't really discussed whether that was something that we wanted to do. And so by, by making that statement, are we locked into using it for that purpose? And secondarily, but tangentially, would we be precluded from a future sale if that made the most sense later down the road?
Well, so what you would end up doing, Mayor, is when we submit it to the countywide oversight board, we identify it's for public use. So right now, it's identified for commercial, private, fair market value. And so we're going to acquire that for fair market value. We can identify for public use, but it doesn't necessarily have to be for the library or for, for community center. The reason why I... The reason why I use those categories because those those are eligible to be used by the city's general facilities fund, which is the 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 DIF program.
Okay, so they're just examples of what it could be?
Yes.
And we're not locked into using it for for those purposes? Would we be precluded from sometime down the road selling it? Is there anything that would keep us from doing that?
I think that the only thing that would happen is that now we have regulations that require us to look at affordable housing. So anytime we want to we want to sell city property, we have to look at what what is it called, Adrian, the?
The Surplus Land Act, and that's what I was going to mention, is that there is the Surplus Land Act that requires us if if we are going to proceed with the sale, we will likely come back with the exemption under the Surplus Land Act that it's not subject to the Surplus Land Act because it is being transferred from one agency to another for a public use. Your question is a good one, Mayor, as to whether we're restricted down the road. That's something I'll take a look at, and I'll report back if if the council is agreeable to moving forward, we'll report back at the next meeting on that issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
Yeah, I looked up our adopted budget, and we we recognized general fund property tax revenues of 5.7 million.
That that includes the RPTTF, and it includes the motor vehicle license swap. And so I think.
Okay, so then, okay, so we clearly need to get a different report. Thank you.
Further questions? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Mayor, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations, one, A through F, and two, staff's recommendations.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Wilson, and a request by our city attorney to clarify that we probably need to vote in two different ways on this, right?
Yes, and I was also going to make one additional comment if I may, Mayor. Two important things that I just want to point out to the the council and and successor agency board. Number one is, you know, we are going on an ambitious program here. And so in order for us to realize the the savings, which are great, we have to ensure that everything is compliant. So, you know, obviously, the Oversight Board has to approve DOF. So there are, you know, things that.
Multiple steps.
Yes, and so I just want to make sure the council is aware of that. Second, one of the things that is not clear in the state law, but we are going to propose it, is the dissolution process. So the statutes contemplate that we have gone through everything, and then we filed the request for dissolution. What we're doing is we're going to request it concurrently with everything else. There's nothing in the law saying we can't, but that is something that, again, it's not exactly clear, we are going to go ahead and propose it again to meet the schedule, and we'll see what the DOF says. But chances I don't know what they'll do. Chances are they'll adhere to it, is my guess. But there is a possibility that they say, no, you have to complete everything first before you can request it. So I just want to make the council and board aware of that.
And I could see them doing that just to make sure that they're they're not getting caught up in something.
Correct.
And and if that is the case, that they ask to do it one action at a time, how much do you think that expands the window?
That likely would expand our window till later in the year, but we wouldn't be able to make the December 1 deadline, potentially.
No, I just wondered how much longer it might be, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we can't do it, it just means that it'll be delayed.
Absolutely, I appreciate that clarification. The any further discussion at this time? Okay, so we need to take this as the council, and then we need to come back and have a second round as the successor agency?
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Allen at this time has has made a motion to approve staff recommendations, one, items A through F, and item two, and Councilmember Wilson has seconded that.
And may I make one last comment?
Absolutely, Mr. City Attorney.
And this is more just for the record. So as we were as your question earlier regarding the Surplus Land Act, I just want to ensure for the record that tonight's action is only to authorize staff to move forward with the the concept.
Right.
And to bring something back, the the action on the sale is not final tonight. That will come back at a future meeting. And I just want to ensure that for purposes of the Surplus Land Act.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that clarification. All right, so we will vote now as the city council. If you would call the vote, please, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so now we need to take this as the successor agency as well. So do I have a board member that is willing to make a motion?
I move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, so Board Member Robles moves staff recommendation, and Vice Chair Hussey seconds that recommendation or the that motion. If you would, please call the vote.
Board Member Allen?
Yes.
Board Member Wilson?
Yes.
Board Member Robles?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hussey?
Yes.
Chair Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much, and we look forward to the follow up items as were discussed. So we will move on to City Council Communications. Since we have no requests for future agenda items, we'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I attended the Solid Waste Task Force meeting, first one we've had this year since pandemic, actually. And if you recall, the last time I gave an update from the Solid Waste Task Force, we talked about the new state requirements on organic waste. And all that, because of the pandemic, got pushed back like a lot of stuff did, but it wasn't forgotten about. And so now the state's coming back and saying, okay, we're going to, you know, we're going to make you all do this. And so I'll just bring you up to date real quick. Current legislation, SB 54, all packaging to be requires all packaging to be recyclable. SB 343 requires truth and labeling for recyclable material. In other words, they can't put on there that it's recyclable if you can't recycle it. And there are there are items that are that are actually like that, that are labeled as recyclable, which we cannot. AB 818 will require wipes, you know, baby wipes, butt wipes, that sort of thing, to have lay on the label, do not flush. This is an assembly bill telling people not to flush their wipes. What have we come to? AB 1276 will forbid restaurants from supplying plastic food utensils unless you ask for them first. The the local enforcement agency, there is there they've authorized an increase at the Colton transfer station, the inland regional MRF, and so they'll be able to they're going to take more in there. SB 1383 Cal Recycle, the regulations are going to take effect 2022, but they're advising agencies, municipalities, cities to start their plan now, don't get behind, because this there will be state enforcement by 2024. There'll be a requirement for the city to enforce compliance of these regulations on their residents. The city's going to be required to provide organic collection services to all residents and businesses, required to establish an edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach, procure recyclable and recovered organic products. And the required amount targets are going to be based on our city's population. We will be required to, and there will be authorities over us that will monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. We are required to do record keeping and reporting, and to adopt enforceable ordinances and mechanisms. To accomplish all this, because the whole objective is to keep organic waste out of the landfills, and to, at some point, to return unused food products back to available for human consumption. Not unpackaged stuff, but I mean, you know, there's there's actually in the law that says that the the state of California, a certain year, I think it's 2025, has to have a certain percentage, 25 or so, I think, I didn't write it down, less or recovered organic edibles. Anyway, I think what they're referring to probably is like produce, you know, that sort of thing. But that was what I attended, and the some bring up today on that, and I just want to thank all the residents that participated in the city annual city beautification day this past Saturday. Thank you very much for coming out and painting and picking up garbage and planting trees. We love that you love your home and your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you. Mayor, we're I'm reporting on the last San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District meeting. As you know, there was some difficulty in relation to their electronics. They started off by approving their 14th of January meeting minutes, and then a presentation was given in relation to the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. There's 18 water agencies involved. They're going to due date the 21st of July, 2021, and it's a they're on a seven month accelerated schedule. Already, workshops have been held to illustrate the common goals. And then in 2015, it talked about water quality, water reliability, flood management, habitat preservation, and they came out with a report card for the various agencies that are involved. And some date in between now and then, there was the third workshop, and it talked about population projections. And come to find out, we're actually lower in our population growth. There's more people that are leaving California, duh, than they than they anticipated. So we're 10% lower growth per SCAG, and that's where they're getting their figures. But the demand estimate was pretty close, and their demand estimate set up from 2020 to 2045. And so far, it seems to be right on the money. So that's really what's going to make a big difference for us. The fourth workshop talked about goals and objectives, projects and plans, and that's coming up, and they're going to finalize the budgets and finalize the projects. They're going to have priority. Upcoming dates for the advisory special meeting on the 20th of May, 2021, a regular meeting on the 15th of July, which is their quarterly meeting. Then they went through regular business, the groundwater groundwater council, voluntary participation in the recharge memories or measures involved. And then they talked about in 4.2 purchased water per Yuba, the Yuba Accord. And the Yuba Accord basically is, you know, all the import water that we need to be able to make our system work. Believe it or not, 72% of the SPV MWD water is import. So the rest of it is well water and capture and so on. It's heavily dependent on the Northern Cal source versus the environmental mitigations that are being litigated still. And according to them, the but the reward for us is that the Yuba Accord water is so economical, even though it's only $370 per acre foot, there is a 30% loss that they have to figure out as it comes down through the delta, which makes it about $408 an acre foot, but still way better than what you can do anything for anything else. We are they're planning on purchasing, at least putting in a place standard for 10,000 acre feet, but it's a soft quantity and probably won't even get close to that. It might be 7,000, depending on the demand. And it has to be soft until they match the demand with the the actual amount of water that they have. They're looking for support on the new or they were looking for support on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Agreement with San Bernardino County Flood Control District. Of course, this stems all the way back to the Silverwood to Paris line that was built in 1972 that loses itself right past my house. And the the in the follow up from that 72 line construction, a pipeline was constructed in 76 to be able to capture the recharge from the ponds and also to implement recharge. And it's kind of funny to watch, but, for example, out in the desert, what they do is they actually pump the water into recharge ponds and then use the groundwater basin to be able to store that water. So that way, it doesn't diminish. If they were to leave it up above, of course, it would, you know, 20 to 30% of it would disappear. They're going to continue with this new agreement to integrate San Bernardino County Flood Control District facilities to satisfy area water needs, and they're thinking all the time on how they're going to try to try to drag up more opportunity to be able to do that. So that's about what I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I appreciate you sticking with that committee and working with them through their technical difficulties. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Thank you, Mayor. We had the meeting of the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, and I had them print out packages, some highlights. The interesting thing is, under COVID, the state has $20 billion above their projections in their in revenue estimates. They're going to spend $536 million for wildlife and forestry resiliency, 9.6 billion for direct COVID-19 impact support. Some of that is some Golden State stimulus, where they're going to get $600 checks to 5.7 million lower income Californians, $2 billion to small business relief grants that they can receive up to 25,000. This and this following, I'm kind of interested for how the impact to the city, tax cuts allowing business to deduct 150,000 expenses covered by the Federal Paycheck Protection Program, and two years of fee relief for restaurants, bars, hair salons, and other state license holders, 100 million emergency financial aid for low income communities, college students. And there are some cities facing six, in aggregate, 6 billion in general fund revenue shortfalls. 51% is attributed to the cities that are dependent on tourist dollars through the transit hotel occupancy tax, and 28% of the shortfall is attributed to decline in sales for some cities. There is also an interesting discussion and continuing working group on the impacts of sales tax destination shifts. So we had the Wayfair decision, but there's still some issues, and there's a city manager's group that's working to figure out how to model and and get the the revenues for internet sales to the to appropriate agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Bill Hussey?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a couple of updates from OmniTrans and SBCTA, but first I'd like to give a shout out to Scott Ward for being with us here tonight. He is the field representative for Supervisor County, San Bernardino County Supervisor Don Rao, and I know that he was in attendance at our cleanup day this weekend, so thank you very much for being here. One of the things that OmniTrans is looking at, we had our April 7 board meeting, we had a re a report on reinstating service. And so we were already going through a reduction in service from OmniTrans, but then with COVID, that that changed dramatically as well. And so as they're looking at the uncertainty with the future, they've determined that they will continue their data driven approach, and I'm glad that staff really has come up with a model for doing that. They have installed flexible and trigger triggers based approach for their 2022 service plan and the budget process. So the board reviewed a combination of service levels that were originally planned in what they were calling their Connect Forward Service Plan, and then the adopted actual service levels that were implemented during the COVID pandemic reductions. For 2022, OmniTrans evaluated remaining at the status quo service level and then various service resumption paths based on ridership and funding. remaining at the status quo service level and then various service resumption paths based on ridership and funding levels. So they're looking at certain resumption triggers that would include health and safety triggers. So of course, the, the purpose of that is employee safety and bus capacity and ridership safety. The second is ridership and demand triggers, which are service resumption routes and frequency. And they are keeping tabs on, on how, how many riders are on each vehicle. And they're using that to determine when they will increase the frequency of routes or, or or maybe even have to increase routes. Financial triggers, which look at sustainability of services. And that's been an issue with this particular agency, especially as they are starting to have to purchase electric vehicles. But they are looking at ways to finance that through grant programs. And then an employee recall trigger, which is triggered based on the demand and the resumption of frequency with the routes. They have a seven-step service resumption plan. And they're looking at the ways that service will be increasing as high schools and colleges reopen in the fall. They're also looking at passenger loads per trip to increase their routes. They are looking at 30-minute morning and evening peak service on the next series of higher-performing routes. And then from there, they will go to 15-minute peak service in core routes. And they will resume weekday service on the Connect Forward Plan. So they're bringing their levels up to where they were originally going to cut from. And then they will also bring in the weekend service. They're looking at the, all seven of these steps taking probably two years to, to work through all of those. But they will implement them sooner as, as their data shows that they should. And so then in SBCTA, during the month of April, with the board meeting and general policy committee, the board approved an agreement with OmniTrans for an international, Ontario International Airport Loop Project. This is going to involve a tunnel from the MetroLink station in Rancho Cucamonga to the Ontario International Airport, which is a huge technology shift in our region for transportation. And that will allow people that are wanting to access the airport to actually have an access point from MetroLink and then bringing them in through a tunnel, which is a really interesting way to go. We're looking at Federal Transit Administration funding sources for that. And then the General Policy Committee received information on the San Bernardino County Regional Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan. So our planning director should be involved in some of these meetings that they're having with respect to that. But this goes back to 2006, when the California Legislature passed Assembly Bill AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006. And the law established a limit on greenhouse gas emissions for the state of California and stated that there must be reduction to emissions levels seen in 1990 and that these reductions would take place by the year 2020. In 2016, the California Assembly and Senate expanded upon AB 32 with the Senate Bill 32, which mandates a 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from that 1990 level. And that must be reached by the year 2030. So in response to the initiatives, there was a partnership project led by the San Bernardino Council of Governments. And it compiled, compiled greenhouse gas emission inventory and an evaluation of reduction measures that could be adopted by all of the 25 partnership jurisdictions in San Bernardino County. So they are, they're helping each of the member jurisdictions to see where they are and what trajectory they need to take for their reductions in emissions. I believe that our planning director should be looking at what specifically we need to do with respect to our reductions, although I think a lot of ours probably have to do with mobile air source that we might not have control over, but it would be interesting to know if we are doing our part. Because it doesn't get, it doesn't get, the report that we received doesn't get into the jurisdictions and what they are doing and where they are in their scheduled reports. However, on the bar chart, we are one of the very lowest on the chart, so that was very nice to see. So lastly, I'll just say one more time, thank you to those volunteers that put together our cleanup day over the weekend. And thank you to Troop 76 for the goodies that they left for us. And that will conclude my report. We'll move on to city manager communications.
I don't have any report, Mayor.
All right. So then with that, we will recess to closed session. We have one item to, to refer to, conference with labor, labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Argara, City Attorney, Colin Towner, Deputy City Attorney. The employee organization is the Teamsters Local 1932. And unrepresented employees include the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, Management Analyst, two positions there, and Principal Accountant and our Assistant Planner. If you are not with us when we return from closed session, we will adjourn our meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. And any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. That request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you for being with us tonight. And at this time, we are in recess to closed session. All right, we will reconvene to open session at this time. City met, or council met in closed session to review one item, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. And we had agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Argara, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, employee organization, Teamsters Local 1932. Unrepresented employees include City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development, Management Analyst, two positions, Principal Accountant and Assistant Planner. There are no reportable actions. Direction was given to staff. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting scheduled on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. And the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. With that, we are adjourned.